Good afternoon, I'd like to welcome everyone to our special call meeting Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020 at approximately 4:30 PM. At this time, feel pleased to rise, I have a question for help. Our invitation to our pledge.
Thank God by your head, please. Lord, we thank you for this day. Lord, we pray that you'll be with us, you're the God, you're the God of our community. A lot of people are hurting right now, Lord, the weather we've got, the water we've gotten, it's almost unbearable, Lord, but we know you'll see us through all this. Lord, be with us and guide us, forgive us our sins, guide our hearts, our minds. And, Lord, I just want to say thank you. Just before we come in, I got good news, my dad, pops, he came back negative. So praise God in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance. United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, in thy name, and thy will, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have renewal of the resolution declaring the state emergency duty code nineteen dated March 17th, 2020. Do I have any questions or comments, or do I have a question to approve?
Question to approve.
Question to approve by Commissioner Gamble, accept. By Commissioner Clemmons, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same time, Mr. Perry. At this time, I'd ask for Mr. Perry Walden to give us an update on COVID. You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Chairman of the Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to come to give you an update on COVID-19. But anytime you have any questions, please feel free to stop and ask me. We are up to three hundred and thirty-nine cases in Swanee County today. We announced forty-nine additional cases. Out of three thousand four hundred and thirty-one people that have been tested here in Swanee County, three thousand and ninety are negative, which is ninety percent. So it means we have about a ten percent positivity rate. The month of June, we have focused on doing a lot of drive-through testings in our community. The Governor and State Surgeon General have been pushing for all six to seven counties to test two percent of their population in the month of May and the month of June, and potentially in the month of July. But I thought I would give you some numbers from our drive-through testing. We had one on six sixteen, which had a hundred and ninety-five people come through. So far, we've had forty-four positive results from that drive-through. Then this past Saturday in Branford, we did a, on a Saturday, we did a drive-through testing down there. A hundred and fifty-one folks were tested. And then today was our largest to date. We did three hundred and twenty-seven people today at the Coliseum. I want to give a huge shout-out to the folks that work at the Department of Health in Swanee County as well as in Fayette County. We've combined resources to help do these drive-through testing events, and we have got a fantastic team. The three hundred and twenty-seven, once we get those tests completed, we have to go back to the Health Department. We have to verify the information on the test tube matches the report, the information sheet that goes with the test. We have to seal it, we have to pack it, and we have to ship it off. So just because we end the test, the testing, that doesn't mean we're done with our job. So all that was shipped out this afternoon to the lab to be tested. We've also had the opportunity to test an agricultural company that's in the pine straw business, where we tested thirty-two of those individuals. They were all asymptomatic, which is a great sign. We're waiting for those results to come back. And then we had a walk-up testing clinic in the early part of June, where we tested fifty-one individuals, and out of that, only five positive. So today, a total of seven hundred and fifty-three tests have been performed by the Department of Health. That does not include the number done by Palm's Medical, doctors' offices, hospitals, emergency rooms, because they're still testing as well. That's a pretty strong number. Last week, on Thursday and Friday, we commissioned a team out of the state emergency operations centers to go into pilgrims. We were getting to see an increase in the number of cases in our Hispanic community as well as our agricultural community. We've been working with pilgrims since late March about their facility, making sure that they've got all the protocols in place, and working with them if they have any issues, concerns, how we can make sure that they keep their employees safe. And we were able to go in and test. In two days, they tested four hundred and sixty-four individuals, which is about thirty percent of their workforce. So far, the results have been dropping, and we have ninety-three positives and three hundred and sixty-eight negatives at that facility. This facility covers eight counties so far in the state of Florida that we have been able to contact, trace people back to. They're coming as far as Ocala, from Duval County, Jackson County, and we've also had cases out of Georgia, mainly Lounts County area. Connected to the outbreak, and we, in our state data system, the Merlin system, where we keep track of all of our communicable diseases, we can assign what they call an outbreak, which is a code or a number, and any county that can trace back to Pilgrim's Pride, it'll go towards that outbreak number. And as of yesterday, they've been able to, we've been able to trace back a hundred and twenty-one specifically to that facility. Excuse me. In Swanee County, with our tracing that we're doing, we look at the contacts, where they were, who they've been around, and if it's a close contact to someone that works at an industry or works at a long-term care facility, then we connect that as being connected to that facility. And right now, we still have sixty-four that we can tie back to Pilgrim's Pride, but we're still doing our contact tracing. And because of some of the barriers that we are encountering with language, we were able to mission through the state a bilingual contract tracer. They actually started today. Thank the good Lord, she showed up, and she's actually from Live Oak. She was able to help us at the test, drive-through testing this morning. So she'll be working with us over the next several weeks, because we have to contact each and every person that's a close contact and do our investigation with them. Also, we learned late Friday afternoon, and working through the weekend with a long-term care facility here in town, they have five residents that have tested positive. Of those five, three are hospitalized, two are in the facility, and unfortunately, one has expired. We are working with the medical examiner at this point to determine if it's going to be considered a COVID-related death or not, but that has not been determined yet. Also, this afternoon, prior to leaving the office to come here, I did have a conversation with the medical examiner's office, that an individual that was COVID-positive in Swanee County passed away today. So we'll be working that case with the medical examiner's office. They are not connected to a long-term care facility at this time, and we're verifying exactly where they are, if they were employed, and where. So we're, that will potentially be case number nineteen for us, as far as this. You may have heard that beginning in July, matter of fact, July the seventh, ACHA, which is the Administration for Healthcare Agency, has put out an emergency order that all long-term care facilities must test their staff every two weeks. So every two weeks, they will be testing all of their employees. I personally believe they're doing that so that we can ascertain if COVID still exists in our long-term care facilities, and how quickly we can open up nursing homes for visitation and getting folks back in, because right now, you cannot visit in nursing homes, that's still not allowed. We want to talk about age real quickly, because I think this is very important, what we're seeing trend-wise. Our youngest case to date is in a four-month-old baby. Our oldest case was a hundred-and-two-year-old woman. Our median age is forty-five. But what we're seeing, and it coincides with the state, right now, thirty-four percent of all cases in the state are between the ages of twenty-five and forty-four, and thirty percent between forty-five and sixty-four. So it's no longer what was considered to be attacking the elderly population. We are now seeing it in the younger population, and that holds true here in Swanee County. We're seeing a lot of teenagers, a lot of young kids, that are now testing positive for COVID. So that is of concern as we move forward, especially with summer camps, day camps, football practice, sporting events, and school opening up. We are seeing those cases increase. In Swanee County, women, two hundred and three females have COVID compared to only a hundred and twenty-eight males. I always get asked about a recovery number. The state is still not publishing recovery numbers, but based upon fourteen-week incubation period and recovery period, we can extrapolate and give you an estimation that out of our three hundred and thirty-nine cases, approximately a hundred and fifty-eight have recovered as of yesterday. It's different in everybody. We're seeing some folks that are symptomatic, never had symptoms but are positive. We are seeing some folks that had symptoms, in three or four days, they're over. Their symptoms have gone away, and they're back to normal. We have seen some cases where people are testing four and five times, and they're still positive. So it just depends on your immune system and your genetic makeup on how you're doing it. I would continue to advise people that the State Surgeon General on six twenty sent out a public health advisory, where he was asking if you're going to be out in public, wear a mask. They are finding out that masks are a great way to help deter the spread of COVID. Y'all may have seen announcements put in the Health Department, but we have, between Lafayette County and Swanee County, we have distributed over sixty-five thousand masks. And in Swanee County alone, forty-four thousand masks, and we have asked for another pallet of masks, which will be about twenty-two thousand masks, that we're hoping for that shipment to come in. And we have targeted everybody, the faith-based community, the sports community, individuals, businesses, agricultural, drive-through, if you came to the drive-through testing, you've got a mask, whether you wanted it or not. That window was rolled down, we were throwing masks in the car. But we have passed out a huge amount of masks, and so we're encouraging folks, if you're going to be out in public, if you're going to be in an area where you cannot social distance, to please wear your mask. And I actually brought mine, depending on how the setup was in here today, if I needed to put it on or not. If I go to publics, I have mine on. But we ask people to social distance. I've actually, Randy, got a lot of calls from my colleagues, "Where'd you get your signs from?" And I said, "Which ones about the social distancing?" And I said, "Well, our county put those up all over the county to help reinforce and remind people about the social distancing." So we still want to keep that in mind, and then also in large gatherings of fifty people or less. So we want to be mindful. People say, "Well, Kerry, what can I do?" And I tell them, "The best thing that you can do is practice personal responsibility. You can take care of your health, you can take care of where you go, you can take care of where you hang out, who you're around, be mindful of your health, and practice personal responsibility." Because we have it in our community. Once it gets into a family, it can spread rapidly, because we actually know entire families that have COVID. And we also know families where just mom or dad may have it, and kids do not have it. But we are seeing cases where it runs through the entire family. Our results are beginning to come in from our drive-through testing. I will tell you, today's testing of the three hundred and twenty-seven, we only had to send three to the state lab. So that means out of all three hundred and twenty-seven, only three were symptomatic, which is great news, wonderful news. But everybody now is concerned, they're alarmed for their own health, they're wanting to get tested, they're wanting to see if they have it. And I tell folks, assume you do and act accordingly. That's the best, because there's not a pill you can take or shots you can get at this time. So just, you know, be responsible for yourself, where you go, what you do. Our team has worked tirelessly. I'm extremely proud of them and the work that they're doing, and it's, you know, we're working long hours, and they're doing a great job, and we're here to help protect the community and try to give as much guidance as we can. We're getting calls from everybody, from churches to schools, to recreation departments, to civic clubs, to events, everyone's, you know, seeking guidance. And we still encourage folks to go to the CDC website. They have some great information and things that you need to take into consideration if you're going to have an event. And then you can also track us on the Florida Department of Health website. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have, Chairman.
Have any questions, Mr. Walden?
Yes, I don't know, straight out of the gate. And it's, I feel as if today, when I came, excuse me.
They don't work. They don't work.
They're not working.
I'm gonna lay down so I can hear you.
Okay. I feel as if, you know, together with our colleagues and our commissioners, we need to enforce. I apologize, I don't have mine on today. I left it, left it at the house, but I said I was gonna start wearing my mask, because with these cases coming up, and I said it unknown, it left from other places into all around now. And I was sharing it with my wife, and I was thinking about this period, this, all these people that work at that facility, and they are around in the community, and a lot of them, they're not wearing masks, they're just out and around. So maybe there's something that we need to come together, Chairman, and make it mandatory that you wear a mask in Swanee County in public facilities, and let us continue our social distance. And it's gonna lead also to, there's a, I think this was one of the individuals you're talking about, this might, they're having their services, and they won't have that church facility. And I'm voting that we don't have over twenty-five or thirty individuals for the wait, during the wait at one setting, and go in one door and out the other door. They gotta have a mask, and sanitation will be a must. So I think this is, we need to strive, we try to do something like that to this county in order to stop some of that spreading of the COVID. And that's gonna lead to something else after, you know, we get to, you're talking about Health Department stuff.
Well, I know that some cities and counties have actually passed a mask ordinance. That would strictly be up to the county commissioners and direction they would want to go. We have, I think, done a very excellent job of getting masks out into the community. Matter of fact, we've had so many calls that we've actually asked for another pallet of masks at our disposal, so that we can continue to give those out. But I will speak to an anecdote of what we have experienced with some of our younger population. We actually had someone that tested positive. We called them that night when we received their results, and they had difficulty hearing us because they were out at a bar. And we advised them immediately they needed to leave and to go home and to isolate, and express to them our concerns and what can happen. It's, I'm concerned that maybe some of the attitude is that, "Well, it's not going to affect me, I can't get it." And that's not true. We are all susceptible to it. We've just got to be extremely mindful of where we go and what we do. Even if I don't feel comfortable going into a store or restaurant, I will go, I'll come back at a later time.
Anyone else have any questions for?
Just one, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kerry, what's the turnaround time on your test results now?
The lab we're using now is about five to six days. They told us four to five days, and it's turned into five to six days, and all, and we use different labs. The state likes us to use certain labs, and we've asked about, you know, and we're about to try a different lab that's going to, that's telling us they can do it quicker, we're going to see. But right now, it's about five to six days on the turnaround.
Anything from the state? I know, I don't know how many they launched, but they were talking about doing those mobile labs. Have you seen or had any?
They are all in South Florida.
Okay.
And possibly Duval County.
Okay.
You know, we are forty-four thousand, forty-five thousand in our county, in this population, but we're not seeing, we're not getting the mobile, the rapid testing or the mobile labs, those, and that's why you see us working as hard as we can, five drive-through testing. And I'll be honest with you, today, we barely made it. We had to go to Lafayette and borrow supplies from them because of the huge turnout. All of our, prior to this, all of our testings had less than two hundred. We were prepared for two hundred and fifty, but because of the teamwork between us and Lafayette County, which I happen to be responsible for as well, we stole sixty tubes from them and were able to correctly, thanks to Jason and I, to correctly count, make sure we had nobody waiting in line that couldn't get tested. So everybody that came today was able to get tested. It meant we had to stop about fifteen minutes early, because we were supposed to go at eleven. But so now, you know, we're trying to make sure that we can keep up with getting test tubes from the state and from labs, to make sure we have adequate supply. They're seeing a crunch in the pinch as well.
Next testing will be when and where?
We have not decided that yet. We are potentially, we will be in Lafayette County because of a situation, thanks to a graduation party. And I don't want to sound flippant or belied of it, but what we're seeing is when families get together, it can spread quickly and rapidly. So potentially next week, but that's not been determined. We've got to reassess after today. And I'm sure the Governor and the State Surgeon General are going to push for two percent of your county's population testing. And this is not even carryover, so all of the numbers we've gotten this month, we've got an extra hundred and fifty people towards our quota. It won't go towards July. We'll have to start over from scratch and test about nine hundred people.
Mr. Chairman, I'm curious, more than anything else, this question, what's your thoughts on this matter? I'm hearing more and more of this idea, other countries have, in fact, I think over in Netherlands and Sweden and like that, have come out and said, they've done studies, and said that the lockdowns have not helped, but the social distancing have been probably the most effective part of getting this disease under control. My question is, is do you concur with what you hear, and that is social distancing more important than stay-at-home orders?
Well, of course, social distancing is extremely important, because you're not in close contact, I mean, you're not in close contact with someone. I've learned something through this, that American people can't stay home. They got to go somewhere. They want to go somewhere. They want to be around people, and they want to talk and hang out and do things. So I'm like, and people will tell you, "I can't stay home." I'm like, "Okay, well, you need to." I mean, for you, not only for your benefit, but for others. So you have social distancing, because it can spread. Those droplets, once it's expelled out in the air and you're within six feet of someone, you know, you can attach to. So social distancing has worked, because you don't have large crowds getting together. But, you know, we moved those numbers up, the Governor and his face too reopening, is now allowing events to take place, allowing summer camps, day camps, sporting events, and so forth. So so far, luckily, we've not had any major issues with those. And I've talked to a lot of Camp Wee, for example, I've spent a great deal of time talking with them, talked to the sheriff this afternoon about Boys Ranch having an event and other things. You know, we've got to do the right things, and that's check temperatures, check symptoms, monitor symptoms, disinfect, wash hands, social distance if at all possible, don't put, you know, all fifty people in one classroom in one confined space, but do things that are, think smarter and a little more creative. But social distancing does work. Matter of fact, I think I probably lost the only two friends I have, because I haven't been able to see them.
Any other questions, Mr. Walden? Any other comments, wish for thoughts about it? I mean, I share your concerns, Mr. Clemmons, and I don't want you to think you fell on deaf ears, I just, you know, I don't know if we're capable of actually doing that, especially with the availability of masks, you know, is there enough masks for everybody? I just, I do want people to understand that it's extremely serious and that it's coming back, and that we need to express that in whatever way we can to get that word out. And if it continues to rise, then obviously, we would be pushed in a corner to have to do something. I mean, I do feel like that's, you know, people need to understand that. But I hate to, I hate to impose the will of government on people, but also we want to be safe, and I don't know what that, what that balance is, is what I'm saying.
I think it's just doing what we're having here, the conversation about people.
Well, and we continue to push that issue, that message, you know, my concern and observation would be not to enact something that we can't enforce, and that could be just as detrimental as well. And we're looked upon at the Health Department as being the enforcer of everything COVID, and that's not accurate. We don't control the restaurants, we don't control the bars, we don't have any jurisdiction over those types of entities. I know that the business of the Bureau of Department of the Professional Regulations are supposed to be setting up another website with a link, that anybody can call and complain or file a concern with a restaurant or something that's not adhering to the guidelines. I'm not sure when that's going to get rolled out, but BPR is, you know, is the entity to enforce a lot of those concerns. We had, I talked to a lady for about twenty minutes this past week about three different restaurants, and how they had three different actions of what they were doing. And we don't enforce masks, we advise you to wear them, we just can't make you wear them. Same thing as social distancing, you know, we preach it and promote it, but we can't go into a crowd and break up a crowd of five hundred. So I would caution that if you do, whatever you do, make sure that it's enforceable, because I think that's going to be an essential piece.
Yes, sir. I feel as if, we're born to be pushed in a corner. So, and it's my prediction, I remember when this first started, and John Administrator gave us, he's given us numbers, those numbers in prison. And right now, as we stand, I don't know how it can be enforced, if that's possible. But it's something that we at least need to think about, and I'm quite sure we're going to be thinking about it. A way to courage. And that, like I said, I'm guilty of it now, because I don't have mine with me. But I, this morning, I was coming in from work, I saw a gentleman on the bike, he rides a bike, he had his mask on. I stopped, and I turned around, went and stopped him. He's about fifty, I said, "Why don't you get your mask on?" He said, "Man, this stuff out here, I'm scared of it." And I said, "Thank you." And when I'm seeing some people voluntarily doing it, it helps me, make me understand that this is the right thing to do, to everybody starting their mask, at least get the word out that we're encouraging individuals. May not be able to enforce it, I mean, how could you enforce it? You can't stop everybody because they don't have a mask, but at least it can say that you are, you know, some type of a choir. Urgent.
Chairman, one thing I'd like to inject, I felt to mention if I could. On the long-term care facility, I took a team in yesterday morning to go through and do our assessment, the administrator and every record nursing, went through that facility. We also called in an infection control specialist, went in yesterday afternoon. I have not read the complete report yet, but the preliminaries from that report is that they were very pleased with what they were doing in that facility, and how they plan to address their COVID residents. So they're in the process now of establishing a COVID wing, in case they have any more, so that they will be able to isolate any of those. So we're hoping that we can help them contain it early on in the situation. So I did want to be sure.
Thank you, Mr. Walden. I asked all the questions we had.
Mr. Chairman, I got one.
Yes, sir.
Within the assistive facilities, are y'all seeing, not just in Swanee County, but in, say, Duval County, Fayette, that as we move further away from the initial date that it started, that they're getting a better grasp on it early when they do have an outbreak? Because I know we had one that it ran rampant through, but we've had others that seem to get, get wrapped up pretty quick, more than a period.
Yeah, and I can, and it's my opinion, the reason that you're seeing that is the amount of resources that are available now than early on. We don't have those same resources back in March, that we've been able to utilize. It would have been a different story out there, but yeah, they're taking advantage of it. We're bringing teams in. The state is also sending teams in unannounced at various, at various times. I know for a fact that in Swanee County alone, most of our facilities have already had three visits from an infection control specialist. So they're staying on top of that.
With the new cases that go up, are the hospitalization rates going up with that, or are y'all tracking that?
We do. And I talked to Rick Nagler, who is the Chief Executive Office for Lakeside Medical Center, for three days now, we've been in constant communication, we've talked frequently with with Lake Shore, eventually closing their doors in not too distant future. He is seeing an increase in the number of folks. A scary statistic that he shared with me on Sunday when we talked was that they had four patients that were intubated over there. That was COVID positive. He says his census has dropped. Yesterday, when I talked with him, the census had declined, which was a good, a good note. And he said that they were seeing a surge in their facility. They had capacity, that he was, we had conversations about when he would pull the trigger to activate his emergency operation planning with his fellow hospitals. So he said that they are seeing an increase in the number of cases. And he wants to make sure that they can adequately handle the COVID patients. But he's also seeing not only an increase in the number of COVIDs, but other hospitalizations. And, you know, we emphasized too, early on, some of the patients that he has that had to be intubated, they were very, 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 very sick because they waited a very long time before they sought out medical care. COVID is beatable. It's very beatable. You need to seek medical attention early on. If you have, if you're very sick and have a symptoms, seek medical attention. But yeah, we also, I talked with Rick frequently and just because, you know, he's a regional facility. Now that, now that ours is standing along with emergency, emergency center, or emergency rooms. So we share and we talk so that he has an idea of what to prepare for them. He's seen increase in their census.
But that increase is due to two parts.
Two parts, yeah. It's not all solely COVID related.
And I agree with you. I think people are not that scared, but maybe decided to let it see that care that they put off for so long. I know of some.
You know, emergency rooms are safe, hospitals are safe, ambulances are safe. So you don't, don't wait until it's too late.
When the increase, are we, when we say there's an, we're seeing an increase, are you, is this because one month it's 200, next month we're 300 cases? Or are we looking at it on a month-to-month basis to see where the average is each month? Like we have 100 cases this month, we have 150 this month, 200 the next? So that you know that extent we're growing? Or are we just staying on the average playing field? Maybe 100 cases or 50 cases a month, whatever it is, and we're just adding to the total?
I'm tracking trend data now, and I'm sure that Rick is too. I'm sure that he's looking back, where were we in May? Where were we in, you know, April, May, June? What's been our numbers? What's been our daily census count? What's been, where we're at? Because if you recall for a long time here in Swanee County, we were tripping on maybe one or two cases here, one case, two case, and then we had a severe spike. And we tied it back to the agricultural community and then we saw it take off quicker. So, you know, we look at, we look at daily numbers, monthly numbers.
But with the amount of testing the same, were you still testing the same amount when you say you were at low numbers?
Yeah, back in May. No, we tested more in June than we have in May. But we still tested several hundred in May. So June has been our biggest test month to date. And the more we test, the more we're seeing, the more positives we're seeing. And we expect it.
Well, that's just one of what I was figuring out. Are we seeing more positives because we're testing more? Or is the trend level because you did a bunch of tests this month and you have a good base that you're going by? Rather than saying, well, we didn't do many tests, but now we did a lot of tests and we've got more numbers?
Well, you know, whether you call it coincidence or not, when we started relaxing some of the executive orders, we increased testing. So with that, we saw an increased number in positive cases. And I think as long as, and social distancing, as Mr. Richardson was talking about, I think that plays a part in. Because now, now we've got opportunities to where we're doing more things with more people. And all it would take is one case, that could potentially spread throughout that event or that grouping. And then we've got a spike.
I noticed that as I was looking at state website, the, we were going, we were trending down on a percentage of positive cases because they were testing so many, we were getting, obviously getting more and more people. But the trend was getting down to a 5% range, 5.7% range, and today it's 6.2. So I don't know if that has.
Well, we're testing about a 10% of our positive cases right now.
I think for us, most of us, we're not likely to get tested even for our city, let alone go get tested just to find out if we have to stay home. I mean, I, I mean, that's just me.
I don't know if you guys polled when they come through, Mr. Chairman, so I guess I jump in. When you guys do these testing, when they come through, do you guys gather information either why they're there? Your folks, someone related to them, or someone they work with, or they just want to be tested?
We don't have to ask. They tell us.
Okay.
And, and it is E, all of the above. We're there because we just want to know if we have it. We're there because someone, you know, family's been positive. We're there because we work in a particular industry. Or I was there because I passed somebody in the grocery store and I didn't like how they looked at me. And so I got tested to make sure I, I mean, that's what they're telling us. And we had a carload today of seven young'uns and a grandma. Eight, which is illegal to have that many kids in a van. And we lifted the hatch and they climbed over the seat and that they wanted to get tested because she's an elderly lady and she's got young kids and we see it all.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're.
Do you know if the ARCA North Florida made it through their day with any of their residents?
Case of you, I don't remember. I don't remember seeing.
With, with their situation, with the home healthcare that they provide, is there a way to do it on their side instead of them having to bring their residents there?
Yeah, we can work with them if they're looking to have their residents. If they're tested, if you'll have them, you know, give us a call, we could try to work out. We like to have enough numbers because of, when we go to test, we're talking, just like the Pine Stroll company. We, they wanted to get tested, so they loaded them up on their bus on the way to work, stopped by. And we did all 31. We were able to suit up and do them all at one time. And that's what we'd like to do instead of getting undressed and dressed.
Maybe like 2,000 with six to eight in it. But to put six or eight per man, then you'd have to give it, probably easier to do it in their familiar surroundings.
We're, we could, we could go on site.
I want to ask a question, Mr. Wald. Once the, do you have a schedule waiting for ARCA's testing sites?
No, he did ask us. We have not determined that yet. I'm sort of waiting to, to forget it's from if it's going to be 2%, 1%, 3%. Be honest with you, we're wearing our folks out on testing. And I want to make sure that we can maximize our team, our staff. And if I need to add a state for additional resources, we have not developed a rise testing yet. But we're going to get through today and get all these, these samples going and all. And then we'll start having that conversation this week about what, what we need to do next. Because at some point, you reach the point of no return where all you're doing is retesting everybody. You know, if you're negative now, we're seeing some that have gotten tested in May and they're coming back in June to get retested.
Well, everything you have tested through today, will you have the results by next Tuesday?
I hope to have all of the results. They're telling us five to six days from the lab. And I want to promise you, say, yeah, I'll have them in the lab.
I mean, you feel fairly confident.
I feel very, I hope to have them by, by this weekend, to be honest with you.
I'm just saying, I'd be worth following up on next Tuesday to kind of see. What Commissioner Van Winkle said in ARCA's percentage, you might be able to tell me more about all of these steps and so many. So recently, it hasn't come back. This is probably going to tell the tale this week of kind of what it's looking at.
Yeah, we're close to probably 500, 550. You know, that's out there that we'll be seeing results coming from.
Right. So that's, that's a pretty good size now.
Pretty much, we have all the results pretty much on pilgrims. So those, those results were bad. We're talking close to 550. That we will be seeing over the next five, six days.
If you plan on updating next Tuesday, we have a meeting at the same time.
4:30 here. Probably before 4:30 next.
It's, it'll be July the 7th. No, we have a regular board meeting. You're talking about your.
A regular board meeting or we got?
This is just an extra weekend this month.
Yeah, y'all, y'all are meeting once a week to extend the, potentially look at extending the.
I was just automatically thinking it was our regular meeting next time, but it's gone.
We may be doing a testing event in Lafayette that day, but if we did, it's in the morning. I'll be honest with you, I ran home and showered because I didn't think y'all wanted to be coming up here in my shorts and baseball cap. It was hot out there today.
We appreciate your efforts and your staff.
Yes, I'll convey that. They, they, great bunch. They set up, they tear down. And they do it. And today, I'll be honest with you, it was nonstop. I think they started, we were there on 7:30 and they're testing by 4:00 till 8:00. But thank you. I'll convey that to them. Appreciate y'all's support of what we're doing and help us spread the word about social distancing, hand sanitizing, masks. And if you don't need to go out, don't. Have some personal responsibility. We try to, because we all can take care of ourselves.
I know you probably will, but if you come back to the next meeting, can you try to have those numbers broken down to the ones that are tied to a facility like pilgrims or, and then the ones that are just at large, so to speak?
Yeah, I gave you that.
I know, I know. I'm talking about the ones that you come back with.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. And again, bear in mind with contact tracing, out of all of these 550 that we're waiting on results, we're talking now about five to 10 people per person that we have to contract because of their close contacts. For example, if one of y'all unfortunately comes down symptomatic, we'd have to be, potentially y'all would be a close contact. So we'd have to get, so yes, we'll do our best to kind of give you as accurate a picture as we possibly can.
I'm fine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have any other comments at this time from the board about COVID? So we look forward to that update next week. I think that'll test a little more of everything. There's a lot of tests going to come back.
The 30th, I don't know. Chairman. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if you have any comments, not particularly about COVID, but maybe a little about it.
I was afraid to get started. I'm only going to say that I agree that I have no reason to believe that there would be enough masks if we were to try to make that mandatory, albeit I agree with Commissioner Fleming's concerns. I was in Georgia the weekend. I saw a lot of masks on people. But they were the little disposable one-day, you know, two or three-hour things. And some of them looked pretty rough, like they'd been wearing them for a long time. So I'm conscious that there aren't enough masks in there. We still have signs available. When this started, we made those signs up. I had someone, I worked with someone who designed those, printed them up. We've had lots of requests. I sent a man around, took it to every businesses that was open at that time. They were available to them, probably seen in businesses around town. We continue to have a few requests for those. We have some on their funerals, church services. We've had requests for some. We continue to make them available for those purposes. So I'll just say that there's a business out there that needs some of those types of signs and we have to continue to make those available. And I don't know what we're going to do, quite frankly. Clearly, clearly, we were very concerned at the beginning of this. The numbers are far greater today and I'm conscious that the public at large is not nearly as concerned. I think there was a lot of pent-up energy and excitement about getting out. And we started moving our things back up. People are just running all over the place today and getting out. We're looking to do. And we've got a massive spike in the number of cases that I believe is directly associated with people letting the guard down and going out and doing what they're doing and not exercising precautions that we've all been encouraged to do. And that's all I'm going to say about it right now. I've got lots of other issues and I'm going to try to hold off on those issues until we have a regular board meeting. I'll probably have to reach out to each of you individually before we get to the next board meeting about a couple of things that have some time-sensitive concerns for me. But I'm going to have to move some, move on some things between now and then. And I'll just talk to y'all individually about that. I'll be get called. Take care.
Ready? We can call your office if somebody calls us about needing signs.
Yes, sir. You good?
Yes, sir.
This time we'll have closing comments. Mr. Pavad, anything for us?
No, sir, not today.
Golf game good?
Wouldn't know. You won't let me go.
It's all about residents of this county. Mr. Herr, you good?
I think so.
Mr. Richardson?
Just that when we have our next meeting, could we add the COVID part of it to our special meetings? Since technically we're not supposed to be making any decisions, just in case we need to talk about a decision of what we're going to do going forward as a county. I just want to make sure that it's on, it's on the agenda. That's all.
For our regular meetings?
No, 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 for the, for the, a special meeting for next week. So that way we're, we're not violating.
We'll just change the verbiage a little bit because that's actually what we're meeting for.
We were putting it in there and we just, that's fine.
We'll just change the verbiage.
Other than that, I'm, I was going to say something and I can't remember what it was, but it happens to me quite a bit.
If you were making a motion to a jar, just give the chairman a few more seconds. He's just out there.
No, I want to say, appreciate the care. I appreciate the job the guys are doing. And that's a tough thing out there. And I'm not one to trust the numbers yet because I'm still not confident that those numbers are where they need to be as far as what they represent. But I am one to recognize when there's a problem. And I concur with you on the fact that we, we do have a situation out there that's brewing. We did see it coming. And it looks like from the federal and state level, we're not going to get any more executive orders unless they're pushed into a really, really tight corner. So it's going to be up to us as, as local leaders to help inform our, our business leaders and make sure that the businesses around here are doing their part as well as getting the word out to the officials. Try to just keep it going in the right direction.
Thank you, sir. I did need to add, I didn't see anybody, but I forgot to say that is there anybody in the public wishing to speak? They always have to have that opportunity. See it, and then I'm going to move forward. Commissioner Fleming, closing comments for us?
Yeah, we, I have a little bit of business, but I want to thank Mr. Wald for sharing that information. But I talked with Parks and Rec director, we talked with attorney, county attorney about the situation that's happening. I don't know whether it's coming from the sheriff or who authorized the Douglas Center to operate a camp or something like that. And I found out, like Mr. Scott about it. And no one talked to him. The commission apparently no one talked to you. And they talked with the attorney and we need to put on the break, put break. I had to offer a motion, offer a motion to, we stop, put a stop to it, or Mr. Scott can talk to that issue. Wanted to.
What did you say went on? I could.
The Al's program.
The bathroom.
Al program.
I don't know whether the sheriff authorized it or who authorized it, but they had to do it. I just found out. And he comes to this board and asks the board for anything, any guidance. And it is accountable to him. I don't feel like it should be operating.
Mr. Scott, you want to elaborate?
Welcome.
Thank you. Just wanted to let you know that we've not started doing rentals for any closed spaces. We have been in contact with Powell. They have asked some questions about what we were doing. I just text Jason to give an update from him. He said that they seem to be doing their due diligence to take care of things, but they have not asked the commission for permission to do that. So in fairness, I just want to let you know, they are, they are, they're taking this serious and they're working toward doing things right. But I can't speak for them. I just, that's the observation we've made.
I think they should come to the board and ask, get permission. I think they should come to this board and ask, get permission.
Do you know the date, Mr. Fleming, what they were talking about?
They've already started.
They've already started?
They already started.
I, I don't have a problem with, uh, side with Mr. Fleming on this about, we need to at least have a game plan before we do something.
Mr. Chairman, one question. Do we normally just kinda give them, and maybe Mr. Scott can answer this, is this kind of like, they have a blanket permission to utilize that building year by year without coming to us?
Good question. Technically, they, they, they've been, basically, basically, they've been operating the gym for years. Several years ago, the commission talked about that specifically, and they talked about, the commission needed to have a voice in what, what they were doing. In fairness, we didn't notify them that we've stopped using county facilities, but, um, I guess they, I shouldn't say, or us. It seems like they've taken on themselves to move forward with their program. And maybe they didn't want to wear immediate come to the commission.
I don't know any of the situation other than they get brought up here today, but I don't know if they were taking direction from the red board, because we did start back the summer program and the swimming program. And we did open up the Coliseum for the voter leads, or they may have just been following by our direction, that unspoken direction that the direction that we were taking.
I'm sorry, a couple of weeks ago. I did tell one individual, you gotta come to the board and, and let us know what's going on out there. After that, later on, I found out this week actually that, that it was happening. So there needs to be a, a port cut. Something happening out there. We don't know.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just, I don't know the details. I'm just letting know that's what the red board.
Well, I, I, I mean, I even take a little further problem with it, if the commission had a discussion with them. Let's have, let's have a discussion about it. And then they chose to go the opposite way, then I can understand absolutely your frustration.
Right.
I mean, it's nothing more than a conversation. It sounds like maybe you asked them to have, and they chose not to now. With that being said, it puts a little different light on the subject.
Haven't they always come to us, or at least, or come to you guys, or just one of the things they do?
I know we, I know they bring it to us that they're having.
We used to get, Mr. Chairman, about a little bit. I used to have to get involved each year when Commissioner Fleming was involved when some of those summer programs were occurring. And there were conflicts in utilization of classes, and they'd make sure there were classrooms available. We would, we went over there on multiple occasions and made classrooms available. And put different ones, we'd go back and forth groups during summer events that they were having. But that was, it was gonna be otherwise, had not established type of reservation or checking in mechanism for the Powell's group that had been there for a long time. But, um, I guess the failure is on our part, maybe. Maybe we should've said, look, with the COVID virus and everything that's been going on, if we wanna be more attentive to what's been occurring with our facilities, then maybe that would slip through the cracks. But if, but if the commissioner spoke to one of the directors of that, uh, activity out there, and they totally ignored his guidance on that, that's another matter altogether. Well, and I will say too, uh, I feel like there needs to be a discussion had at some time, because it's not something you really ever see. Versus Park and Rec, you got kind of a protocol. You're going on, on open, come back up, starting things. And they're not really a part of it, so they don't know what your protocol is or how you do things. I, I think that's very important, because you're practicing safe, you're trying to get things rolling. And, and they may be too, but we don't know that. And I'm sure, from the concerns I hear from Commissioner Fleming, he's highly concerned about it. So I, I, I completely understand that.
Well, if they, they did call and ask what we were doing, we share what we were doing. We never gave permission. Red board never gave authorization. It's not what our place to, but, oh, Mr. Pfad?
Mr. Chairman, two summers ago, this plan was addressed. Uh, we redid an agreement with Powell that put them under the direction or the reservations that it had to make, all scheduling, all anything, and the events they did for the, you know, the Douglas Center gym out there, had to come through Parks and Rec. And that protocol is there in place. So if it just hasn't been followed, we need to remind them that that's what the protocol is. But it is in place, and I can provide you all with a copy of that.
I, I would suggest too, that we invite them to the hearing from this board, not from staff, but from this board, saying, you know, this is what we recommend. Or will we require?
I was of the, excuse me, I was of the opinion at the time, the way that the situation was handled, um, very fortunately, you know, by Commissioner Fleming, but not so well from, from Powell. And we were at the point of taking away the keys from them, you know, period, for them to have access. So they had to exclusively go through. But again, that's been two years, you know, and how it's been moving forward, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
How many participants are there in the elements?
I just did some pieces, because I got a phone call, and my way not providing a refrigerator. And I said, refrigerator for what? All the kids out there at the, at the Douglas Center, I'm saying, there's no kids out there. Well, no, no, there are. And, um, it was just done wrong. Uh, it, it was just done out of, and three weeks ago, I shared the information bluntly, that, that is a county facility. You don't have to go out and sanitize. We got, we got the stolen, that work for the county. Take care of what needs to be done. And, and, and I thought it over. Well, then I'm hearing that they got dry rubs, everything is taken up to the pools, and, and all it takes is one case. And we got a situation at hand when we, when this is a county facility, this is, you said, you know, and I know that you, you're doing some of your camp. But, uh, I think if you do things like unhanded or just do it, taking on your initiative to do it, you need to come and get direction before you open up a facility and start bringing these people, kids in. Come to the board and ask the board. Here I am, you could've come and, you could've asked me. And I told you the same answer, no. But I thought I asked Mr. Scott, and he, did he, was he asked? And you told him, no. That's when I had the territory to that situation. That's an example.
Yeah, I, I guess it goes back to a lot of them. Obviously, they were against what you give them direction on, but, I mean, did the kids, or maybe did the volunteers?
I don't know, I don't know how the kids acted out of their word.
Yeah, they're supposed to do that.
I don't know these conversations.
It was the insurance issue that was a big issue at the time, too.
But you just don't go and, 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 and open up a facility when you don't come to the proper people. And you just gotta throw them around, and you don't control the situation out there.
Sir? Send Mr. Harris and Ray out there with the address?
Tell us what you wanna do. Do you want to shake the keys and have it handled by a reservation and come back to the board and have reservations to those facilities? Because we don't bring other reservations back to the board, but this is a unique time and unique situation. We can do whatever you wanna do.
I guess my concern, Mr. Chairman, would be, how many participants are out there? Are they doing things to be safe? Like I said, I want to do some guidelines, what they're gonna do, or how they're gonna do. And also, we don't wanna do anything to take away from the kids if you're gonna have to, you know, that, that's the part there.
I, I, I agree with that. You should not. But at the same time, you're putting people alive.
And they should?
You know, get some type of direction on what you're trying to do.
Let me ask you this question, Mr. Fleming. Would you be opposed to this if, if we sent Mr. Scott over there to see if they're following the right protocol? And not take it away from those kids and have, but at the same time, let them proceed, but they have to be, they need to come to the next meeting, our regular scheduled board meeting in July, and need to come and speak with us and let's clear some of these things up. Would you? I'd just hate to take it away from those kids and all the rest of the kids in the county. And then these parents say, well, why are y'all not letting our kids do this when the other camps have started? I mean, would you be?
I, I've thought about all of that, too. And I ain't trying to be hard. But if you follow guidelines, and personally, they need to tell you, you know, you don't, I mean, and you know, the story will be different. And, and, and they'll tell you, you know, if, if you do this, there's a consequence. In fact, I ain't trying to be hard, but.
It's, it's, I don't think we need to hold it over that person who's accountable.
Yeah, we gotta be accountable.
We all have to be held accountable.
I would be accountable if a situation occurred and, and we allowed it to happen. I, I, I do have broad shoulders, and I, I still believe.
No, sir, I, I don't have a problem with that at all. I just offered a suggestion. And I'm pretty clear that that wasn't, uh, what you wanted to do. So, so if you like, we'll follow your guidelines.
Well, well, we can let, allow Mr. Scott and Randy go in and, and, uh, take care, let me do the take care. Did y'all, who gave this to them?
Take care, what do you want to take care?
Let me ask you a question. Let me ask you a question. You tell me what you want done, it's gonna happen.
Well, it, it is.
So here's the deal. Um, I think we have a couple of options here. One is that we take the guidance that we've been given on social distancing, on sanitation, on wiping things down, on all of those types of things. We type that up. We take them and say, this is gonna be the requirement if you're gonna utilize this facility. And if you can't demonstrate that you're doing this, we're gonna shut it down. We'll come over here on any given day, and these things aren't in place, we're gonna shut it down. Okay, that's one option. The other option is, we just go there and say, we're shutting this thing down until you come to the board, get authorization by the board, and then we, we'll have the criteria available, that you're gonna have to, the conditions that you're gonna have to follow.
Okay, let's go to the first one. And they, they need to know, they gotta come and ask, get authorization first, before you go in and do anything.
Just from what I was listening to, and my idea is, let's let them continue operating, but go be very firm that from hereforth, you're gonna come ask permission to utilize the building and follow the agreement that we already have. And if you won't just keep doing it, you're gonna follow at least the minimum guidelines that we're using for Parks and Rec, that's currently operating with our, um, our, our daycare. And if that's not something they can agree to, then shut it down. But I don't wanna shut it down and the kids not have an option or where to go.
I, I, and I, I don't disagree with you, Mr. Chairman, I mean, not Chairman, but Commissioner. But at the same time, not only to get somebody reading, but if, if a fire break out of there, no one knows, that no one do that surgery.
Oh, they, they need to know what they've done.
Yeah, we need to know what's going on.
They need, we need to know what's going on. And they need to know that from now on, that we're gonna shut it down if we're not made aware of what's going on. But those kids are at no fault that we weren't made aware. And they don't need to be, in my mind, punished for somebody else not following proper procedure. So that's, that's my only concern, is I'm not disagreeing with you on the actions that were taken, that, uh, they didn't follow your recommendation. If it was just affecting them, I'd say shut it down. But it's, and those, those kids, all they know is they're gonna have a good time tomorrow. And they need to. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming, I like the first option. I mean, I'm, I'm torn between these two options, because I'm the type of guy who'd go in there and say, you know what, we're still up to you providing the board with, with a, a plan and procedure for how you're gonna operate this. And it's gotta be with, with ours, um, you can operate. But I also think about those kids, too. So I, I do believe that we have the authority to shut them down. Um, and I think that we also have the authority to mandate that they, that they operate according to, uh, guidelines. So I'm willing to put this thing in the hands of our administrator and our Parks and Recreation Director, so head blocker, uh, with full authority at board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We certainly can go out there and give them our recommendations, what we're doing already, from sanitation all the way through the programmatic piece of it, um, checking temperatures, the whole, the whole deal that we do, um, making, so this is what the expectation is.
Do they have the resources to do it, to follow a lot of the capability? That's another question I got.
Do you still have the monitors?
Here, here's the thing. I, I think that that is not optional. And I, I think the key to this is that we ensure that they can comply with those recommendations. And if they don't have the equipment, if we've got other equipment, if Sharon can help with equipment, fine, but if we can make it available, and if, if they're not gonna utilize it, then we will shut them down. But I think we need to give them an opportunity and see if the resources are available, so that they can do the sanitizer, the mask, or whatever they need over there, and they take the temperatures.
Yes, I would like to let you guys know that about two or three weeks ago, before they started, someone came to our office and we provided them with approximately sixty masks. They did tell me that they were going to be having less kids this year. I believe thirty was what they were limiting to. I haven't been over there to confirm anything. So we did provide them with hand sanitizer and cloth masks.
Do you have a thermometer?
Yes, we can, we can provide them with a thermometer as well if they don't have that.
Well, I'll be, I, excuse me, Chairman, I, I'll be, I'll be willing to, to buy back that, to, to agree on that. Now, I don't wanna point to kids, but sometimes, you know, my wife tell me, she said, you need to get on him because he did something before he got home. I used to tell her, I can't chastise him because I didn't see him. But as I've grown older, then I, I'm discovering that if you don't put a leash on that, it get out of hand. And by way of saying that is that, we have to set a protocol to commit the danger. You don't do anything, any kind of way, I, I can't do that. I, I won't be a part of it. So if Mr. Scott and Harris can set some standards for them, admire the option one, that, uh, let them know that this board is, and I'll be flipping off in there.
Mr. Chairman?
Moving forward, we can handle the programmatic piece, that's, yeah, that's easy part. But we need to be, we need to be a clear message from this board to their board about, you know, things that you've covered before. I don't know if they ever tripled down to the board and they enforced that with staff to make sure that the staff do what they need to do.
That's why I said, we're gonna come in and have a discussion. I mean, I, I just feel like sometimes when you have problems like that, it's kinda hard to, to send office staff or someone over to tell them when it falls on deaf ears. Sometimes you need to come in, let's sit down and have a group discussion. It's almost asking too much. One thing that would remedy part of this is if this board voted and said that annually, this group is gonna have to come and get authorization before the program. I wouldn't, no, that, no, that, that's another term and conditions. But I, I would say, if the board votes and says that annually they're gonna have to come and get authorization.
And I agree with that. But I think two years ago, we essentially did that.
Well, we had an agreement on the terms and conditions of reducing the property, but I don't remember. I, I just do not remember. Did it require them to come annually and get authorization?
I don't think it required annual, but it had something to do with schedule, though, it seems like. Because there was, there was.
It was.
There were some, we were running into some hiccups with different events trying to schedule at the same time. And nobody knew when there was a basketball game or a practice scheduled. I, I remember having a conversation. I I remember having a conversation about the schedule, but I don't remember if it was at that particular.
If you make that decision right now, we can take that message. And particularly right now, it's associated with this COVID virus. So it is beyond this scope of what we came here to discuss today.
Because, I mean, just last year, we had a scheduling problem when you had the uh the radio station had the um event out there that was supposed to be inside, and it wound up being outside because it was a basketball tournament, and they weren't, they they weren't left handed and right handed, what was going on.
Well, I know what's coming from, but I, you know, I won't, I I won't be able to say I know what it's coming from, from the individual, I think you answered. And COVID needs to come, it's the county city. And I understand that, that it it need to be a little bit dressed up, dressed up. And and it 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 just boiled down to, uh, you wanna give a letter and and redo it and explain that to them, tell them in black and white, they got it. And they were, when they had the classes out there, they were having classes before we stopped that, because they put them in a long way. Um, they were, they were supposed to come before the board and present that, because Matt got involved there. So we supposed to Brett come and present that they were having a class, that they were having a care. Now, this time it didn't happen, and especially during COVID nineteen, and that was part of my stipulation, I said, well, CDC had gave us approval to try to do that about three weeks ago. So, and it happened. And I I I'm just not satisfied with that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd be willing to offer a motion that we uh that we make it very clear that uh every year they're gonna have to come and um get prior approval, they're gonna have to give us a schedule, appropriate amount of of lead time to be able to calendar this thing, and and that way there's no conflicts, schedules, or there's no misunderstandings or anything else. I'm willing, if we don't have that in in writing now, I'm willing to put it in writing. So I don't know, how you want to form that motion?
That was fine.
Thank you, you do. I could wish you a second.
Are we, are we acknowledging, are we playing the ground or for that, when this starts? I mean, does this need to have to come within the next certain amount of time for this year?
Well, let Mr. Fleming tell you.
I would, I would say that when the summer come in, before, they need to be a schedule, give the Parks and Rec before you do your scheduling, say, well, I got it, because there has been some issues out there prior to this.
My my point is, I wanna be clear with those folks, though, are we are we putting this in place that they don't have to come back till next summer before it starts? Or do you want them to have a schedule, even though we're already in summer now, do you want to provide a schedule for this year?
No, not this year.
So you're saying that we will get, we will get their schedule? Mr. Scott and I'll get their schedule for this year.
Because, let me tell you what happened. Because because this individual, if you were sitting out there now, I said, you start scheduling stuff and then have them. And and that's what.
Chairman, I'm actually, Mr. Fleming, I mean, you go, Mr. Scott, I mean, the events that they had, you have no idea.
Well, we have the, the thing, we've got a schedule through our office. And you think about, we've got all the pavilions throughout the whole county, we run out the county facilities, Hill Park, other places, the arena, the whole deal. Having another column for open space at at Douglas Center and the gym for Douglas Center is one of the deal. It doesn't have to be an annual thing, there could be some programmatic things that they give us schedule for, but they may say, we're gonna have a tournament on next Saturday. Well, and we look at the schedule and say, it's available, just like we do anything else. Um, we have, we schedule back to back to back, I mean, if you ever saw my phone, it's got everything listed on it one more time a year. Um, but it's, it's thick with all the activities. So adding two more columns to that about what's in the gym and what's outside, certainly we need to know year round what's happening, but also if they do have special events or whatever, that way we get a call from the radio station wants to have the cultural event, we we can pull the calendar up, say yes available on that Saturday.
Well, I think it's just important to start, especially starting right now, as we've been over there working and and making improvements and Parks and Res, I mean, at some point there's probably gonna be practices and things going on over there with the equipment that's going in, and I just, we do need a solid schedule on what's going on. With that being said, I do have a motion on the floor about an annual.
I was just gonna ask, before we vote on it, could we hold it off to the next meeting and give the attorney the chance to look at what we already approved? Because I, in fact, my mind, I think it covers schedule.
It has a schedule in proportion to it.
Yeah, I think we may.
Honestly, I just can't remember what.
Yeah. I really feel like, I really feel like we put schedule under Parks and Rec then um for the same reasons we're talking about now.
I don't think that, I'm not talking just about scheduling, I'm talking about coming before the board.
Yeah, but if if it, if we do a schedule, we know it's a standard program, and as long as they schedule every year that they're gonna do it, um, I I don't necessarily think it has to come to the board, because, I mean, we we don't approve baseball, football, you know, it's just, it's it's every year they do it, they do it every year, and we know what's going on, but as long as they're calling to make sure that the facility is open, um, and that they can, they can schedule it, as long as there's not a scheduling conflict, I wouldn't think it's a problem.
As long as we give, I I'd be willing to to table it and talk about it until we find out more. If, as long as we, if, under that condition, we um we give Parks and Recreation the authority, obviously say, no, we have to go before the board and um and get this approved because of this condition, in this year, COVID nineteen. Uh, in another year, it could, I mean, it could be, uh, we could have storm damage or something like that.
Well, this year's unique because we shut all the facilities down, and before you go open a county facility again, you should have found out if the facility was available. That's the unique situation that's going on right now. Other, if if it wasn't for that, it wouldn't have been really a big deal, it would've just been kind of standard operating procedure. But I think a lot of what, and by best I can remember, a lot of what we're addressing is in that agreement, and if it just needs to be readdressed or touched up a little bit, I'd rather look at what we already have and see if we need to add to it, take away from it.
Let's just, let's just, if if you're willing to table it, we'll put it on, we'll put it on the agenda for the the next regular scheduled board meeting.
Was there a second to the motion?
I did second.
Well, then if you remove the second, if you go some way, you don't need to table anything, we'll just put it on the agenda.
Okay, my second.
You remove the second.
Now, what Chairman, what I have done was, I have called Mr. Scott and and as an event, when someone out of the community um really need to schedule, I called him enough time to let him know what's going on. And that, that ain't a problem, that ain't a problem, it's just the problem is that if uh some, but sometime if 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 uh someone like the radio station wants to put on a program, and the individuals, he would say, well, I got something scheduled. How do I know you got something scheduled?
It needs to be reserved on, it needs to be reserved on Parks and Rec.
That's what I'm saying, it all needs to go through Parks and Rec. I think that agreement says that.
This is done.
We just need to re, we just need to enforce that agreement.
Now, you got eight hundred people held up, and you you trying to schedule thirty people and make, trying to make that happen. So that's.
Well, Mr. Vavat can research that.
I think once we look at that, we're gonna say, we just need to enforce what we already have.
I would, I would go back to say, instead of waiting two weeks and discussing and talking about this again in two weeks, is if he, if he finds out that, uh, as he researches it, that uh that all of this has been done, I think a nice stern letter that addresses that would be, oh, any letter from Jimmy is a stern letter.
Mr. Chairman, I agree, I think if Jimmy gives me what they've got, it'll make it happen while we're.
Okay. I I really, my best memory that when he gets on that, it's gonna cover what we're talking about.
I just, I just. A stern letter following up.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I didn't want to wait two weeks on them going and making sure they're following protocol either.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm fine, if I mean, if they, if you have the stuff in place, then it, there's really no more discussion needed.
I I think it'll clean itself up.
And if if you find that there's not, then we have more discussion. What was added to the agenda, Mr. Harrison added to the agenda at that time, so we can have more discussion for clarity. Are you okay with that?
I'm good. I'm good. And I I thank you for this small discussion, and it's, it's simple, I think you've taken care of, maybe you don't have problems down the road between the, between the areas.
Well, I'm just, I just don't ever wanna get you upset like that, to me.
I've been.
I I'm kinda going down, I'm getting within my six foot of Mr. Hell, 'cause Mr. Fleming is getting.
I've been here for, for three and a half years, and that's probably the first time I seen him get his blood pressure up a little bit.
Well, there's a history there, I'm gonna tell you something. Mr. Fleming has taken it on the chin from a handful of people that have tried to stir trouble uh over the Douglas Center, and I can say this because I witnessed it for many, many years, I mean, from going back nearly ten years now. Um, he's been uh very gracious and very patient, and he's been very forgiving to a lot of people who have attacked him. Um, and he is, I I have seen him give instruction to some people out there that think they own that Douglas Center. Um, and then those people turn right around and do what they want to do despite whatever he had encouraged them to do. Um, so I think ten years worth of being patient and being gracious, uh, I think it's time that uh Mr. Fleming be allowed to say his piece about this and um make a difference in what happens going forward.
Mr. Chairman, I've, if, if by any way you do not follow what the board wished us to do a couple of years ago, I think we're supposed to apologize, we're in that position. Uh, that's just not how we operate, so, you know, Mr. Fleming, we always have a relationship, and anything we need, we take care of it. You know, if if I'm misunderstanding anything that the board wished us to do in the past, you know, we will get it corrected.
It's, it's.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, Mr. Scott. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm gonna ask you one question. Um, and I was gonna hold off on this until later, but this is directly associated with the COVID issue and uh this so-called stimulus funding, this grant opportunity. This thing is quite exhaustive, there are lots of issues associated with it, but uh there's an opportunity for local governments to be reimbursed for direct expenses associated with addressing this issue. Um, in my mind, that's an easy part for us, because we've got good records on direct expenses. Uh, there may be an opportunity, and I'm, and I wanna see this in writing to maybe address the funding for some dedicated uh ambulances. Um, and I've talked to some of you about that, but again, I wanna see it in writing um from the state or federal government authorizing that. Outside of that, uh, we have had some phone calls, I've had some phone calls, I've had some emails from individuals asking if we're giving away free money. Um, are we giving away free money to businesses, are we giving away free money to all of the citizens in the county? Um, and my response to date has been that, no, we aren't giving away free money, and we don't have a program to give away free money. Um, and some have used the communicated notion that some other counties are giving away free money to everyone. Well, I I don't know if that's true or false, and I don't have time to chase down every other county and figure out what they're doing. My question for this board, because this could turn into a very large uh time-consuming issue, trying to formulate a plan for this board before your next meeting, but with some guidance, it doesn't have to be that complicated. I'm just gonna tell you that while there are some provisions in that grant to offer funding to businesses and or people who are financially distressed, it calls for a program that would have to be staffed by some personnel to handle. Uh, I don't mind telling you that I've also been contacted by a number of what I will call consultants or vendors who at this time remind me of ambulance chasers. Uh, all of these entities are contacting me and shooting emails to me saying, hey, we'll handle this for you. It reminds me of some of those companies that do the same thing after storms. Um, they came through after tropical storm Debbie, they wanted us to allow them to handle all of our claims and paperwork with FEMA, and we did not do it. And we were reimbursed all of our expenses. And other entities that chose to utilize those services from these consultants and vendors ended up not getting their money reimbursed and had problems. So a very general question associated with this COVID issue, as it pertains to this, the availability of funds from the federal government or being administered through the state, is, does this board have a desire to create a program and find staffing or contract with someone to staff a program to give money to businesses and or citizens? Um, and before you try to answer that question, I'm just gonna tell you, if you haven't already read it yourself, that the burden also rests with the local government to certify that these businesses or potential businesses and potential individuals have not already otherwise received funding from some other state or federal program or entity. Um, in my mind, I absolutely have, do not have the resources to accomplish that. We're not tapped into the state or federal government's computer systems, where we can track people or businesses by federal ID number, a social security number, anything else. At best, we would have to create some type of affidavit and just ask people to uh utilize the honor system um while they're asking us for money. So I'm asking if this board is prepared to give me a little guidance on this, because, you know, it's easy enough for me to address the issue of uh direct reimbursement for direct expenses to all of our local government agencies that have incurred. This is separate apart from the school board, because they have their own uh distribution, and we're not involved in that.
And this time, I have a question for Mr. Harris. I I know when it first come out, there was very little guidance on this. Have you received any additional information or just what we originally?
I've received very little additional information. There's been a question answer period that's occurred with the conference calling that was posted over at the EOC whenever I sat in on some of that and left some staff behind to sit on the balance of it, but, you know, some were very good questions, some of them were fairly common, you know, questions that I don't know if anyone asked, would ask. But at the end of the day, I think the original guidance they sent addressed the important issue of accountability and, you know, kind of very broadly described what the money's to be used for. I think generally that's still the case, I mean, although there's been, you know, some answers that have kind of elaborated on some of those general topics that funding could be used for. But uh, the important thing to me, um, and the important thing uh issue with the clerk of the court, when I met with him, um, is that of accountability and the fact that the local government has to pay the money back if an audit uh produces evidence that funding was not utilized appropriately.
Um, you know, Mr. Harris, I think I mentioned this to you earlier, we've had a few commissioners from other counties close to us reach out to me, uh, wanting to go in partnership and maybe hire a firm to help distribute and decide on this, but in the end, as being Mr. Harris discussed, it's still up to us, we're still accountable, in the end.
I I don't get a good feeling with this consultant idea concept at all.
Yeah.
Um, I I've seen it too many times, I've seen it fail too many times.
I already get an, I I'm not, I'm not in that agreement that you can, of course, make them responsible for their, for their mistakes, I don't want to be responsible for somebody else.
And that was their concerns as well.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd, I'd love to help the uh businesses out, I really would, but we didn't close any, the only four businesses we closed were were the internet cafes, you know, because they weren't practicing social distancing, weren't able to uh. And that was what, less than a week before the governor shut down, everybody else was going through the state. And we just simply, would you say, I, I, as much as I want to help, I, local businesses, I see the dilemma. I don't, I don't think that it would be, I don't think it's physically responsible to create a position that could be reimbursable by that same amount of money just to distribute and help distribute money for businesses and oversee that. It takes away from the very reason why they're doing it.
Is there a deadline on this too?
There is a deadline. Whatever money's subject funds would have to be spent before the end of December of this year. But let me just say this about businesses. There is no entity better suited to address the distribution of the funds to businesses than the agencies who already have their federal ID numbers and track that. We don't do that. So to say, well, you can use this for this purpose, because you don't have the tools that we have to accomplish it. We don't have the tools. So.
I think my position would be on it too, is that basically you were stating, I guess the documents read that you couldn't have had any of the other programs that's out there. My position on that would be any of the businesses, unless you go get that, I mean, if available to those programs. Whether it's the payroll protection or whether it's DL, EIVL on the version. So there's things that's available that they're able just to do on the computer. I just, I want to help everyone, but I don't, I don't see how.
I will say as well that.
Sometimes I just get a bad feeling about things and just happen to be one of them with that bad feeling. That's right.
Yeah, there's a list, quite exhaustive list of other options that are available for businesses that Sharon sent out. Was it this morning? I can't remember. All these emails run together after a little while, but I mean, it's a very exhaustive list of opportunities that are out there for businesses that they themselves could utilize if they choose to do so without us trying to be in the middle of their facilitator. Because the reality is, we can't be a facilitator. We can't certify one way or the other what a business has or hasn't done in the last several months or going forward. We simply don't have the ability. So I just need some guidance from the board. They'll just need to decide if he wants to focus on the direct expenses that we've incurred, that all of your local government agencies have incurred.
What's your thoughts, Commissioner? You speak, I'm gonna be a pound of that all.
No, it's fine. I think that we should just focus on what, I don't want to be selfish about it, but focus on what we can handle. And I don't believe, I agree with Mr. Harris. I don't, I don't believe that that's something that we have the ability to do, to do well.
Good question, Mr. Chairman. I agree with that because I think moving forward, there is a deadline. As I'm reading this stuff, a new guy gets into it, it changes. There's things that are changing up there. You know, maybe they'll come out in thirty days with something very clear or a new guy, a new, something called, I'm not ready to jump on it right now.
Well, just like the PPP program, they passed this whole thing, they sent all the money out. And then they come back and pass the bill for the forgiveness part of it. It was like, wait a second, I thought they already decided on the forgiveness part of it. They could have changed everything for the forgiveness and in fact, they did. They changed a lot of it, changed percentages for the better. I, I'm not a big truster of government, the first big government in the first place. I'm not. Just kind of do what you can to make sure.
Speak for yourself. Now we're in government.
I'm talking big government, you know, like. You watch very carefully what you do on their behalf or you do it for their rights.
I haven't, I mean, how many, Mr. Chairman, how many businesses have actually reached out to us?
I have no idea. I mean, I've received a couple of phone calls and an email, maybe two emails. But that just means there's more of them out there pondering that question. And my response to date is there that we don't have a program to give money away. And I just can't even envision trying to put the staff together to try to create a program to administer this thing. Where we could even be successful with it. We could give money away, I can tell you. Easy. Just in a helicopter, fly over the county and start throwing money out. But that's easy to do, but being accountable for it's another matter altogether. And ensuring and telling the federal government by agreement that we're going to follow all of your guidelines. That's another matter altogether.
Well, it's like we've been told our whole lives to have nothing free. I mean, it's being taken from somewhere else to, to.
Mr. Chairman, I've been in on a conversation on the Zoom call coming back with funding. And I asked you some questions and one of the commissioners down in, in, not in Oakley's town, but Pierre Bird, he told me that, he was sharing that, but I don't know what kind of businesses that they have. If you're larger cities in the municipality, they got to know about the way, it took them about eighty, seventy days, ninety days to get there. But he was saying like Nelson Land and, you know, and Gold Camper and other businesses, but I don't know what type of businesses that individuals have. But I've checked them emails and from fact, I've been able to see emails and how they would utilize this money. And I have some questions. I was gonna call Chris Bull and find out how are they utilizing this money? Who's getting this money? Who's getting this funding? And David Sells got a ton of answers. But the other commissioners across the state, how they utilize those funds, they were, they was up in hoopla by it. They were happy and excited. And I thank you for, Mr. Harris, that the county, we will be accountable for those funds if they are misappropriated. And we have, we'll be the ones to manage it. I don't, I've been thinking some of the businesses around here that had a deal effect. I don't really know. Actually, you know, the Nelson Land and Ush, they were.
Well, they've got programs that are already in place. Like the chairman said, that these entities had opportunities to apply for some of these programs for the last several months. If they have done it and they were rejected, does that mean that we could give them money? They could answer the question and say, well, no, I didn't receive any money from another agency. But if they were rejected for cause, then I don't know how we can create a program that's going to enable us to be comfortable.
I just, I don't see how we can police this. I mean, I understand people's gonna be upset and, you know, trust me, we want to do what we can for everybody, but I just want to see how we can. At the end of the time, it's sometimes tough decisions have to be made up here. This is one of them. And we got to get some broad shoulders like Commissioner Fleming's got over there and decide. At this time, I just can't, I just can't take some money and give it away and not know how it's gonna get paid back and not know the questions that are gonna get asked and audits we're gonna get and did those people take it and what did they use it for? Did they use it because they really needed it because COVID affected them or did they take it, go on vacation? I mean, how are we ever supposed to know all that? There's just no way to, to. So at this time, I mean, if something comes forward like Mr. Hell said, moving forward and we get more clarity and there's more things and maybe there's more forgiveness for it, for the people and for the counties, then absolutely I don't have a problem revisiting it. But as of today, right now, I don't feel good about it. And if we was taking it both, I don't think so.
My vote is that too. Not yet, right now. That gets more.
More, as we move forward, if something changes, then.
Well, the point is real simple. I've got to know what I've got to try to address and what I have to prepare for. And I can't prepare a program overnight to handle something like this. We are prepared. We've got a mechanism in place. Our routine method of taking care of business here, we've got documentation on everything that we have, that we're involved in as far as direct expenses and all of the agencies that are associated with us. We can easily identify that. And we've got the justification in place. The only additional question is whether or not we can do something with some ambulances. And we're going to try to get a firm answer on that, something in writing. And then if something else that would produce a direct benefit to the local government and our ability to continue to address this virus going forward, then we will try to take advantage of that as well. But we're prepared to do those types of things because that's what we do. You know, we're prepared to handle grant applications. That's what we do. We're in the business of doing that. But we've never been in the business of giving money away. That's something entirely different and foreign to our typical business. So from what I have heard, and I haven't heard anything from Commissioner Campbell, but from what I've heard, I don't need to try to create a program or go out and hire consultants to come in and create a program to help us give money away.
At this time, with the data I have and the knowledge and the research that I've done, most.
How much, how many, how much money is it?
Two point five million.
That's twenty-five percent. That's twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent.
There's more than that.
I thought that we were okay.
It was, I think it was two point nine percent.
Yeah, that's twenty-five percent. And there was two point something.
Our twenty-five percent is two trillion, not twenty-three thousand.
So it's eight million dollars.
Twenty-five percent.
Eight million dollars?
Yeah.
And see, I don't, I didn't see anything. I assume that there's some enforcement guidelines because, you know, if we were to create a program, give out money, the government has their program, they give out money and say, hey, if you don't spend it right, you're not to pay that money back. Now we become our accounts, we have all of a sudden accounts receivable. We have accounts receivable and we have to collect that money from people who did not spend it right. Not only do we have to create a program.
I can't sit here and take a chance and put the burden of eight million dollars on the back of the taxpayers in this county. I just can't, I can't take that chance right now. I'm sorry. I know, I know people's gonna be frustrated, but I'm just sorry. I'm not gonna take a chance and say, hey, we're gonna take this money, we're gonna try to start giving it out to people we think. And then we're gonna have some that's upset because they didn't get it. And I mean, at the end, it's gonna be, it's gonna be terrible. And then at the end of the time, the government comes in and says, okay, we need, you need to be accountable for this eight million dollars and.
We make, and were we able to make the other people accountable for their part of it? That's what he said. No, we can't make.
There's gonna be no recourse to that part.
There's, that's a.
We don't have access to anyone's payroll reporting, anyone's income reporting, anything that federal agencies have access to. We don't have any of those too. And that's why I say it's impossible for us to validate any claim from anyone regarding income either on an individual basis or a business basis. And then we could say one way or the other whether or not they had already received anything.
I mean, it just seems like that if they have these type of programs that they were working with and they've already worked with the ones with the banks to work with the businesses, why wouldn't they just continue to fund that and let the banks that are in the business that lend them money and have access to all your records and your, and all your tax numbers and all those things? Let them continue to do that, you know? I just don't understand. They don't want to get us in a situation that we possibly can't get ourselves out of.
Somebody had an ear, had the ear of somebody in Washington created this, had this into the program. I think probably they decided help the counties out, spent on what they spent, but then they added.
I may can understand some of this when you're in Miami or Orlando or a big city like this and you have hundreds, if not thousands of people on staff and they have a way to deal with it, but I mean, as far as the type of help that it would take to every document. I kind of, I kind of think back to the, listening to the time you put in for FEMA reimbursements. And it was stacks of papers and round the clock.
That's right. It was incredible.
And I kind of equate it to that's what it would be like trying to.
It would be worse because we'd have more claims potentially. Well, we handled, and the federal government does audit. I mean, this isn't something that they just put in paperwork. They actually come and audit.
Your guidelines for filling out FEMA reimbursement is very clear.
Very clear and our staff recognizes what a legitimate claim is and what it isn't. So, but again, we're prepared. It's a matter of our daily routine to keep that type of exhaustive records so that we can demonstrate that we have done what we said that we're doing. We have produced those records. But it took six months for them to audit the FEMA claims after tropical storm Debbie. And you have the potential for far more claims for funding here if you open the door and say, we're gonna give money away.
Can we use it just to pave roads for code response?
Or to elevate roads that are currently underwater.
About the program that I asked Mr. Harris is, I mean, with this big program that they want you to be in charge of, there's very little that county can use anything for. But they want you to be in charge of this big, I don't, I don't understand that part. I don't. So at this time, do we have any other comments, thoughts on it?
There's just one ahead, Spud.
I've got a tree through the roof of a house that I need to go get a tarp over, so I'm just trying to let us get this thing rolling. It fell through and right about the time we were pulling in.
And let me guess, is that District One?
Your house? This one, I have to guess.
Thoughts, Mr. Williams?
I'm just gonna tell you that my plan going forward is to address our direct expenses and anything that we can justify that the state and federal government authorizes us to do, so that we can address the virus and/or cases of virus, including the ambulances if they want to allow us to use the fund for that. And we won't be spending time trying to create programs that probably the federal government's better suited to.
Well, when you're talking about ambulances and things of that nature, we're not talking about the possibility of possibly putting the tax burden of eight million dollars on. We're talking about trying to alleviate some tax burden if we're able to get some funds that we don't have to take from the taxpayers to use to buy ambulances, if possible.
Right.
So those things make good sense to me.
And that's gonna be our approach.
And to be, and what I'm saying, the ambulances have to have certain types of equipment on for them.
That sounds like a great idea, but honestly, I mean, they're learning as they go and realizing that there's things they need to do different or have that they don't have when they get to where they're going. So that's all about saving lives and learning as we go. It's a process. Well, for the record, in case some are not familiar, we've tried to have dedicated units and personnel to respond to these and it's increasingly difficult to accomplish. So if these funds can be used to purchase a couple of units that we could dedicate and hire additional personnel to handle that, it would be much better for us. Because try as we may, it's been, it really has been almost impossible. We've struggled with that.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, for the pleasant comments was forty-five minutes ago. We'll move forward to Commissioner Campbell.
Anything?
Most good, right?
I gotta, let me get through my paper.
Well, the only, yeah, the only thing I'd say is, Mr. Dennis Bond, all of you, you guys are very fast to like. Just great people. Just keep the box hanging. Just great people. Just keep the, the Bond family. Prayers.
Absolutely.
He was county employee for nine years.
Yes.
He's a man of course in the public sector.
Yep, he was a.
Good, good people, good friend, just heartbreaking. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, can I mention something? The date, the date of the second meeting, not the date, the location, the second meeting, we talked about this today. I just wanted to make mention of this now because Mr. Scott's going to have to explain. Now, we're going to have a public hearing in the second.
Regularly scheduled.
Regularly scheduled meeting at the Coliseum. Public hearing that goes back to zoning land use issue. And it's the only way that we can ensure that there's adequate room to maintain social distancing for a public hearing is at the Coliseum. So we need to go back there for that particular meeting for an advertised public hearing. I want to mention that to you now.
It's going to be a big.
And particularly Mr. Scott will need to make sure that we've got the equipment there for the sound.
Just to clarify, that'll be the third Tuesday of July.
Correct. That's the 21st.
Because we have meetings every week.
Yes, sir.
That will be at Coliseum as long as we can afford. And I mean, just for the record, it's a company that will be per $30 dollar sole finance to come back. Okay.
There we go.
Have that discussion. Only thing I got is, uh, just great to hear good news about your dad. Mr. Hill, proud of that. Commissioner Fleming, I commend you today for taking the stand and making your voice heard. I mean, that's it. He's always led by example. He's done a good job. Thumbs up. I can hear a witness sitting up. I'm just proud of him. Sometimes people just need to understand that, you know, you can't get pushed so far. You have to make a decision. That's, that's what this board is about. It's about, you know, to be clowned down. I appreciate you for that. I need some motion to adjourn.
Sir.
Please, Commissioner Richardson.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Hill, in favor, say aye.